Good evening. I'd like to call this January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four School Board Regular Meeting to Order. It is now six P. M. The School Board would like to take this moment to respectfully acknowledge we are residing on the traditional lands of the Denai people. Our mission is to provide an excellent and equitable education in a safe supportive environment so that all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society. Mister Burgess, would you please say the pledge? Ms. Richardson, would you please call the roll?
Colonel Alvarado and Colonel Cole are both excused. Mister Lopez?
Here.
Mrs. Burnett?
Here.
Ms. Maple?
Here.
Mister Burgess?
Here.
Mrs. Sanderson is excused. Ms. Marotti?
Here.
Mister Doran?
Here.
Mrs. Hardy?
Here.
Thank you. The Board has a quorum.
The next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda, and before we move to that motion, I am going to reorder the agenda to move item K, which is our closing comments and committee reports, to happen after item J, information reports, item one, so that when we move into executive session, there is no reason for anyone to have to stick around after that. With that in mind, could I have a motion?
Move to adopt the agenda with consent items.
Second.
Sorry, I meant to say the agenda is adopted by consent, so there is no vote. The next item on the agenda is public comments. Our core value is to engage with students and family and staff and the community to support student success. Public comments on report and non-agenda items are limited to three minutes per person for a maximum of one hour. People who have signed up in advance may testify first. We have no advanced sign-ups. Is there anyone in the room that would like to testify? If you could please state your name, spell your last name, and your area of residence, and you will have three minutes.
And Asa members just returned from our annual delegate assembly. During that assembly, educators across the state shared stories about how flat funding for education has resulted in cuts to programs, school closures, and increased class sizes, among other things statewide. In Fairbanks, we too have felt the impact of these cuts, and you as School Board members are faced with the task of creating a balanced budget in the weeks upcoming. I don't envy you. Class sizes here in Fairbanks have increased over the years. Cuts have been made to music and art, fewer counselors are available, administrators have been cut. Given our inflation and economic realities, flat funding for education has amounted to decreased funding, and over those past seven years, those cuts have hurt our students. The governor has suggested giving bonuses to classroom teachers, but that doesn't really address the many needs that our school districts across the state face. It doesn't repair our buildings, it doesn't provide for needed counselors, it doesn't offer us robust programs and activities that our students need. Those needs must be addressed by raising the BSA, the Bay Student Allocation. Today was the very first day of our state's legislative session, and educators across the state were read for ed to show our commitment to our students and to our community that we believe adequate funding for education must be a priority. I am so proud of their commitment to their students and their profession. Thriving schools benefit our local schools, our communities. Public schools shape our communities. It is our educators that make all professions possible. So tonight, I want to just thank members of FEA, Asa, our administrators, our superintendent, and you, our School Board members, for showing up for students and letting our government officials know that funding for education is a state priority, and we need them to act in order to provide students with the schools that they deserve and to provide schools that our local communities desperately need.
Are there any questions from the Board? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room wishing to provide public comment? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. The next item on the agenda is the Borough Assembly Report. This evening, we have Assemblywoman Liz Reeves-Ramos. Did I do it right, Liz?
Yes. So I just found out that I was going to be doing this yesterday, so this will be my first time, so please bear with me. But I guess there were three things that we recently passed at the assembly that I thought were worth bringing to your guys' attention. First one being ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three dash sixty-five eighteen nineteen, which was an ordinance authorizing the mayor to lease by a competitive proposal twenty process eight. Newby Park in North Pole is now going to be, which has been off of the Parks and Rec inventory since two thousand and sixteen, is now going to be open to a competitive lease and will be utilized for sports teams out in North Pole. It's going to be really exciting. There was a lot of positivity in that. Every Assembly member is a cosponsor of that bill or of that ordinance. And then, one, another one, ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty dash one M ten eleven is a ordinance that we got a matching grant to retrofit and renovate Annweein Elementary School, which is going to be pretty exciting because it's going to be a kind of a flagship for renovating and making it more energy efficient and stuff. And then, we passed the KIP, and there were a lot of projects, proposed projects on there that have to do with the school district and especially the sports fields and track and tracks. And there's one thing that I learned from that process was that there's a lot of deferred maintenance that needs to happen in regards to places for sports to be played here in the borough. And then finally, on January twenty-ninth, I just want to remind you that we have a joint work session with you guys, you all, and us at the Assembly. It's going to be in the Assembly chambers, and any proposed resolutions can be provided to the clerks in advance. And that concludes my Assembly update.
Thank you, Liz. I think we have some questions for you, or Ms. Reeves-Ramos, better. Ms. Marotti?
Thank you. Thank you for being here and being at our first meeting of two thousand and twenty-four, and your first School Board meeting. Congratulations. I also just wanted to, in light of Borough meetings, the Borough is having a Finance Committee meeting this Thursday, and it will be in regards to the revenue cap that the Borough is facing. And that is at five thirty?
Five thirty, yeah.
At the Borough Chambers. And then I just wanted to recognize another Assembly member in the room, Nick Legianis. Thank you for joining us here today. Appreciate you.
Ms. Burnett?
Thank you, Ms. Lives, Ms. Ramos. There we go. I apologize. First off, I'm really excited about Newby Park. I saw that go down. My kids used to play on that park, baseball, and then it was taken out for a few years there, and so I'm really stoked to see that being brought back out and reutilized for sports activities or whatnot may happen out there. So really, really excited for that. And I just really wanted to thank the Borough for coming in on that contribution for the Annweein roof. I know that it was mostly covered with a grant, but your guys' addition to that is really much needed, and just thank you very much for approving that so that we can get that underway. My kids went to Annweein, and I know that it's very much needed, and I know that I think it comes with some lighting upgrades as well, and it's something that Annweein definitely needs, and we're very thankful for that. So thank you.
Any other questions from the Board? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is my President's Report. This week, we have what we call a retreat, but is really an all-day work session on the nineteenth and the twentieth, so Friday and Saturday, and we will be tackling our, what are currently our chapter twos, or am I goofing it? Chapter twos, but will become our chapter nines from our policy manual, which is how the Board governs itself. It involves discussing our committees, the makeup of the Board, all of the nuts and bolts of what is the School Board. We will also talk about Board self-evaluations, and it's really focused on how we can do a, or how the Board manages itself and governs itself and does well. And that will be available, all the hours of it, on YouTube, and you're also welcome to observe. There is no public testimony or anything during that time, but it is an open meeting. Ms. Burnett and myself will fly down to Juneau on the twenty-second, and we will be down there until the twenty-fourth, meeting with legislators and encouraging them to vote for an increase in the BSA, as well as the other legislative priorities that we will approve at this meeting. On that same note, again, it's a new year, and it's the start of our legislative session, so if you haven't already, or even if you have, please contact your local representative. It is so important that they hear from you. Fairbanks is a small community, and yet we have a lot of representatives, and they represent a relatively small portion of our population. And how they vote very much depends on what their constituents have to say about it. So please, you can Google it and an email, a phone call. They are very responsive, and I would, the whole Board would like to encourage you to reach out and ask for an increase to the BSA. The next item Ms. Ramos has already talked about, which is our joint meeting with the Borough Assembly. We're very excited to be having this. It will be on the twenty-ninth, and some of the things you can expect at that meeting is discussing the finances of the Borough and how that impacts the school district's budget, as well as hopefully a joint BSA resolution that is being worked on right now by a few Assembly members and a few School Board members. And the last is tomorrow, there is a Senate-House meeting on SB one forty, which is a BSA bill that will be at four P. M., and you can watch it on Gavel to Gavel if you'd like to become more informed on what is being talked about for education funding. Doesn't appear that there is an opportunity to testify at that time, but please be on the lookout for when there is. We really could use everyone's advocacy this year to get an increase to the BSA. With that, the next, oh, Mister Doran?
I just want to apologize in advance to you and the rest of the Board that I will be late both Friday and Saturday. I was able to clear all my calendar except for meetings, appointments, nine o'clock each morning, but I will get to the retreat and work session as soon as I can after that.
No worries, and no apologies necessary. I know we scheduled that when you told us that you weren't able to make it, and we're just so thankful that you were able to clear your calendar to at least attend portions of it. Mister, or Dr. Minert, would you please do the Superintendent Report?
Thank you, President Hardy. I'd like to give some updates on hiring in the school district. The principal hiring processes for West Valley High School and Lad Elementary School started this past week. Hiring committees for the schools include teachers, support staff, community members, military representatives, an F and A representative, and a member of the Diversity Committee. I'd like to thank those for serving on the committee and volunteering your time, as your feedback in the process is critical to finding the right fit for each school community. We're also in the process for hiring a new Chief Information Technology Officer. We've had an excellent applicant pool for that position, and have made it through two rounds. We've narrowed that applicant pool down to three candidates, and we'll host third-round interviews in the next couple of weeks and hope to have an offer out to a successful candidate at the end of the month. That's a huge position within the school district, as many things rely on technology, so we're excited that we had a great applicant pool and look forward to working with whoever will be our next Chief Information Technology Officer. A positive update on the transportation front, Durham has been successfully adding additional drivers over the past months. We've increased sped routes, and this will bring our sped route count to thirty-three, which is up from twenty-four at the beginning of the school year. We've already corrected many timing conflicts and longer ride times on those routes and regular routes as well, so some positive things happening on the transportation front. I do want to remind the Board and the public, adding drivers and routes is exciting, that we're able to offer more robust services, but it does come with a trade-off, as when we add routes, it comes at a cost, and our transportation fund balance is projected to be exhausted next school year without additional transportation funding increases from the state. And so, as you have heard tonight, funding increases are something that we're asking for. One of the things specifically that we're asking for in addition to a BSA increase is increases in transportation funding, which has remained stagnant for the past eight years. I'm incredibly excited to share with you that our data for our K-three students on their winter M-class assessment showed improvement across all four grade bands. This is a huge accomplishment for our students and teachers who have worked so hard on their literacy efforts this year. Our educators have obviously put a tremendous time and effort into improving these benchmark scores and doing a ton of interventions between our fall assessment and the winter benchmark. We'll have another REEDS Act report for the Board at one of our February regular meetings. Parents will also learn more about benchmark scores at parent-teacher conferences, although, you know, we encourage all parents to attend, parents and guardians to attend parent-teacher conferences, but it's going to be especially important for our K-three students as we're working through the REEDS Act for the first time. As you probably know, as a Board, one of the components of the REEDS Act is talking about retention for our third-grade students that are far below proficient. As we've discussed previously, we feel like retention is not the answer for the majority of our students, and that M-class is only one data point in the whole story of a student's career journey within the elementary schools. And so, this is something that we don't take lightly, just because, I mean, we put a lot of value in that M-class data, but just because that M-class data, the one test on one day, doesn't necessarily mean all students need to be retained. And so, we'll have those conversations with parents. Some initial letters went out to students that their proficiency on the winter benchmark showed below proficient. To start that conversation with them, they'll have additional conversations with teachers at parent-teacher conferences, and the principals will be involved if parents do want to seek that retention option for their students. At the end of the day, that decision, it does lie with parents, according to the REEDS Act, and so if they want their students retained because they are far below proficient, then they can do so. If you haven't already purchased your tickets for Lathrop High School's Shrek the Musical, get them while you can. I know my family will be attending Shrek this weekend, and so super excited. Lathrop puts on some fantastic musical performances, so wanted to give a shout-out to the Lathrop High School Shrek crew. The North Star College Lottery is open for interested students for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The lottery application will close on February twenty-third at three P. M. North Star College will be hosting a variety of informational sessions for prospective families and students in the coming months, and if you'd like to know more about those times and dates, visit ktwornorthstar.org/norstarcollege, and you can find out all about them. We're also doing a ton of social media promotions to try to get the word out for interested parents, guardians, and students that want to know more about North Star College. Lastly, I'll continue the theme, talking about the state's legislative session that kicked off today, as you As you can see, many of us are wearing red to support the call for adequate funding for education. School districts in the state are facing a financial crisis like the state's never seen before. We're calling on the legislature to pass a permanent increase to the base student allocation, or the BSA. School districts cannot continue to do more with less. And without a permanent BSA increase, the district will be forced to make extensive cuts and raise, and potentially raise class sizes. I'm calling on our community to reach out to their local legislators to communicate the importance of properly funding education as the children of our community need our help and support. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Mr. Doran.
Thank you for your report. Two questions I have. One is about the lottery. You mentioned specifically North Star College. It's my understanding that the other lotteries are open, or at least some of them. I believe Hutch has had their announcement up.
Is Hutch's lottery still open, Sarah? We believe Hutch's lottery closes February 16th. And charter school lotteries, I don't believe.
Yes, Hutch's lottery opened November 27th and closes February 16th. Charter schools, each one is a little different, I believe, but in the month of February, January or February, it looks like. I can share, we can share the whole summary with you if you'd like.
Okay, and how about Burnett? It's a magnet school.
Burnett opened January 18th and closes March 18th.
Okay, thank you. Do you want me to go my other question?
Go ahead, Mr. Doran.
The other one was in terms of the REEDS Act letters. Appreciate that update and I think some reassurance for parents that. But my question is in terms of the letter that went out. And I know I sent you a note on this. I was just approached today. I have not seen the letter, but the tone was pretty negative as a parent was reading it, that they were really concerned. Whereas getting the context of it's not just one point, there are lots of factors. Don't jump to any conclusions. But is our letter one that we've written versus boilerplates from, or deed saying, this is how you're supposed to say it, but we can do it better?
Yeah, great question, Mr. Doran. So I did reply to your email this afternoon and attached the templated letters we sent out to principals. It's a tricky, we're definitely trying to thread the needle in terms of ensuring parents understand where their student's proficiency level is at and not raising alarms at the same time. And so to your question, if we just took deed's templated letter and sent it out to parents, the answer is no. We did try to soften the language and ensure parents understood, one, where they knew where their students were at. But that's, you know, the assessment is only one data point. And so we'll take that feedback. If there's other ways that we can make that language more familiar or more friendly to families, we'll look at doing that. This is all new for all of us in the district. And so this is our first run-through added as a district. And so we'll continue to improve processes and communications with families in the future.
Just follow up quickly. Thank you. I will, and I'll take a look at that then. And I appreciate your emphasizing for parents that this is just part of a conversation. And that when they, even if they don't want to wait until parent-teacher conferences, they can talk to their teachers, their principal. And so if they have concerns, they can, they should really do that and use it as a piece of conversation. So thanks for that reassurance.
Absolutely. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, oh, she, she told me she was good. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent evaluation template. May I have a motion?
Move to approve the superintendent evaluation template for the 23-24 school year.
Second.
Is there any public comments on this agenda item? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Would anyone from the ad hoc committee want to speak on this?
I think I was the chair, but we all worked really great together. I gave all of my notes to Dr. Minert. So do you still happen to have those?
I'm sure I do on my desk somewhere, but we can, do you want me to walk us through?
Yeah.
Some of the updates?
That'd be fantastic.
Yeah, absolutely. So I appreciated the ad hocs work on this and the board's feedback throughout the process. I think we landed on a great evaluation template and definitely updated the look and feel of it and modernized it for today. One of the pieces of feedback early on in the process was under each section heading to give the short summary of what the standard is about. So we made sure we included that in the updated template. As the ad hoc committee worked through it, we also added down in the scoring boxes, numbers along with the language. So you'll see a number one correlates with does not meet, number two partially meets, number three meets satisfactory, and number four exceeds. You'll see that throughout all of the sections and that relates to the standards within that specific section. Also, under each section, calling out for comments, commendations, and opportunities for improvement. And one thing that we added to the template in the ad hoc committee, an asterisk at the top, that board members are required to provide written feedback in each section of the evaluation to help the superintendent understand why the specific score rating was given. So that was a big addition. And one that I appreciate, oftentimes, you know, a number doesn't necessarily give you a lot of constructive feedback one way or the other. And so getting a written, under, a written description of why the specific score was given is definitely helpful from my perspective. Let me see if there was anything else. And then just some stylistic updates. I believe Mr. Doran asked for Fairbanks North Star Borough School District superintendent evaluation to be spelled out in the header, which we did. And I think that concludes the updates that we made in the ad hoc committee.
Ms. Marotti.
Thank you, Dr. Minert. It feels like it was so long ago when we sat down and discussed it. One more thing that we added was under superintendent goals was specifically the word see attached goal report. That's a hint and a note that the goal report will be attached, which is a separate document, but very influenced on the evaluation. And then if I could just make a request for, where is it? Introductory management, the paragraph under the title, if that could be bold.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Mr. Doran.
I just want to say thank you for fellow ad hoc committee members, but especially to Superintendent Minert. Because part of this actually goes back to when we sat down for negotiations. And his being very clear that he wanted to set goals and wanted to engage in conversation with the board on this. And I think the boards, over the last, all the years I've been on here, every year we do the superintendent evaluation. We say, you know, this form needs to be changed. So this is six years later. And, and I know there were conversations before that, before I was on the board. But I, so I really want to thank Dr. Minert for being one of the prompts for that for our various board presidents who have taken it on, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Hardy, to really move us forward to getting this. And then the participation by fellow board members and in putting this together. So I think it puts us on a good track for the conversation that really needs to take place between the board and the superintendent.
Any further comment or question? Seeing none, Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried.
The next item on the agenda is the annual audit report. Our goal is to ensure students, staff, and families and the community are informed and connected and engaged with the district. The school district's fiscal year 2022-2023 financial statement audit is complete. Ms. Nico Herbert, Director of Accounting Services, alongside Brian Kupick, sorry if I didn't do that, Audit Principal, and Gavin Brandy, Audit Supervisor, with Altman Rogers and Company, will provide a brief overview of the audit. May I have a motion?
Move to approve the FY 2022-2023 financial statement and audit as report.
Second.
Go ahead, Ms. Herbert.
Ms. Richardson, do we know if Mr. Kupick's on the phone? Okay, I wanted to make sure. Are you guys able to see my slides? Thank you guys for your patience. We attempted a troubleshoot earlier and it worked, but in the moment of the spotlight. I have to do it a certain way if I want it to present correctly. Awesome, that worked. Good evening, board members. Thank you, President Hardy, for introducing me. My name is Nico Herbert. I'm the Director of Accounting Services for our school district. And joining us remotely from Anchorage is Brian Kupick. He is the principal audit partner at Altman Rogers and Company. We are both here tonight to present the June 30th, 2023 financial statements. First, I'll hand it over to Mr. Kupick to go over the audit results of the audit and address any of your initial questions. And then afterwards, I'll dive us into the numbers a little bit. Mr. Kupick, you want to take over?
Mr. Kupick, we cannot hear you. If you are able to hear us, just give us a minute. If you can hear us, could you please check to see if your volume is up and that you are off mute? We're going to take a short recess while we figure out the audio.
In addition to that, as part of the financial statement audit, we also go down the balance sheet, which is the assets and liabilities of the organization for each fund. And we tie those out to some kind of supporting documentation. So, you know, if it's in the grants, we tie those... We make sure the grant AR is recorded correctly and the revenue and expense are recorded correctly in each of those grant funds. On the main balance sheet or the general fund, we'll go down and make sure that the cash agrees to the reconciliation at the entity-wide. So, if there's questions on what audit procedures we might do to audit a specific account balance, I'm happy to field those kinds of questions. In addition to the financial statement audit, we also do our audit over federal compliance. That, we follow the guidance given to us by the Office of Management and Budget, the federal agency, that tells us what... It gives us guidance on what programs to select each year. We then select major programs and then test those major federal programs for compliance criteria that is given to us by the federal government for each specific department, depending on the program we're testing. So, for our school district, Department of Education is the most common. So, we select our major programs and then we will do our individual testing of compliance over each of those programs. So, what that usually involves is pulling additional samples and testing the internal controls over compliance for that program, making sure that the costs charged to the program are allowable, that whatever the applicable criteria are that the feds want us to test for that program, that we're reviewing that. So, like, reporting is a big one, or period of availability, procurement, those kinds of compliance requirements, we're going to test that for each of our major programs. In addition to that, we also do something very similar for state programs with guidance given to us by the State of Alaska. They have their guidance for selecting major state programs. So, we select our major programs for state and then test those state programs based off of requirements given by the state for each specific program of what they want us to look at for that. But it's pretty similar to federal. They want us to make sure that the costs charged to the program are allowable, that the proper reports have been filed, and that sort of thing. So, when we go to the financials, you'll see the actual results of those three audits. So, if you go to the financial statements themselves on page one, which is page 19 of the PDF, I'm not sure how you guys have it in front of you. But this is the auditor's opinion over the financial statements. This is an unmodified opinion, which is the best type of opinion that auditors are allowed to give. And essentially, what this opinion says, it takes like three pages to say it, but more or less what it's saying is that the following financial statements are materially correct in the opinion of your auditors, which is me in this case. So, that's good, that's a clean opinion. Now, that's not necessarily what governing boards are most concerned with. They want to know, okay, well, what were the findings, what were the results of the audit? Because anytime you have, if there's an adjustment or an error in the financial statement, typically, management will just make those adjustments, therefore making the reports materially correct. And then you still get an unmodified opinion, even if you had a bunch of issues. So, where you would go to find any of those issues in the audit report is going to be all the way in the back on page 200 of the PDF. This is the schedule of findings and question costs. So, you can notice there's a bunch of boxes here and checks. But essentially, if there had been any audit findings as part of this engagement, they would be documented and written out on this schedule here. So, you'll notice that there, at the bottom there, there's a section called, "Section Two Financial Statement Findings: No Matters Were Reported." So, what that means is that we, as the auditors, did not have any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies that we discovered during our audit that we felt warranted the attention of governance. So, that's obviously a good thing. The threshold for us reporting findings is pretty low, and it's really easy to get findings. I work with a lot of school districts, and I usually, I would say, about over half end up having a finding in their audit report. So, you know, some of the things that can get you findings, you know, we do a lot of internal control testing. So, if we find errors or issues in that internal control testing, that can result in findings. So, you know, if we have, you know, the 100 transactions that we look at, if two of them don't have proper documentation, that they were approved before, you know, payment was made, it's very likely that you would get a finding in your audit report describing that situation. So, that just kind of gives you an idea of, even if the transaction was correct, if it just wasn't documented, like, proper approval, you could potentially get an audit finding. So, that kind of gives you an idea of how low the threshold is and how easy it is to get findings. So, when an entity doesn't have any, it typically is a very good sign that the internal controls at the organization are functioning as designed and are effective. So, that's kind of, those are the results of the financial statement audit. We also, as I mentioned before, did an audit over federal compliance and an audit over state compliance. We didn't have any issues or findings in either of those areas either, which is also a good thing. The threshold for federal and state compliance findings is very, very low. You know, for example, if we had tested a major program and we found that one of the quarterly reports for the organization was, let's say, two days late, that would be an audit finding under reporting for compliance for that program because it's kind of a pass fail. And our hands are kind of tied as to what we report. So, if the report wasn't filed on time, that's pretty much an automatic finding. So, you could see that, you know, the threshold, just filing a report two days late, will get you an audit finding. So, the fact that we didn't have any findings over federal or state compliance, once again, speaks highly to the internal control structure that the entity has over its federal and state programs. So, that's the audit report itself. Before I turn it over to Nico, I wanted to talk briefly about the letter to the governing board. This letter is pretty uninteresting unless you have findings and issues. So, we didn't have any major issues or findings during the year. So, this letter is largely boilerplate. But one area I did want to point out is that on the middle of page two, if as part of the audit, we had had to make any adjusting journal entries during the audit, you know, if we found an account that was misstated or a correction that needed to be made, all those corrections would be listed out in the middle of the page there under the heading "Corrected and Uncorrected Misstatements." So, you see, there's just a little paragraph, there's no bulleted adjustments in there. And what that means is we didn't have any adjustments that needed to be made as part of the engagement, which is very good. That's how it's supposed to be. Essentially, what it means is that management had the financial statement 100% accurate and correct before it ever got to us as the auditors, which is exactly how the process is supposed to work. So, that's another good thing that I wanted to point out. So, I know I just did a very fast whirlwind tour through the audit report and the audit process. So, that's all I have, but I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Thank you so much for that, Mr. Kupick. Ms. Marotti.
Thank you, Mr. Kupick. Our previous auditors provided a management letter, which is a letter prepared by the auditor discussing any recommendations for improvement that were identified during the audit but not required to be included in the auditor's report. And I apologize if I'm missing it, but I can't find it in this year's report. Could you put me in that direction?
So, that would be the letter to the governing board that I talked about there. If we'd had recommendations as part of the engagement for, you know, things that rose to the level of findings, we would report them in that letter.
So, are you stating that there are no recommendations for improvement? We've had them in the past every year. So, it's great, and it's interesting to see that we don't have them this year.
Yeah, I didn't have anything that rose to the level that I thought needed board attention.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Herbert? Thank you, Mr. Kupick, for joining us tonight. I look forward to working with you in a few months. Just for the listening audience, we're adjusting from one screen to sharing a different screen. So, it will just be a moment. There we go. It disappeared. It shows an option anymore. There we go. Okay, as we get ready to dive into the numbers, I do want to emphasize that our school district publishes two separate reports. We publish the annual comprehensive financial report, and that's the audited report that Mr. Kupick just discussed. That's our detailed view of our financial health and our compliance. We also publish an optional popular annual financial report, and this is a reader-friendly summary of district highlights. Our annual comprehensive financial report is also referred to the ACFER, and I want to give a shout out to the accounting services team for their continued dedication in preparing this report with me. They've once again received the GFOA Certificate of Achievement and Excellence for Financial Reporting and the ASBO Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. These acknowledge our district's commitment to maintain high standards in our financial reporting process. I equate this to them earning an A+ on our financial report card. So, jumping into the numbers, let's start with general fund. This is our main operating fund. This is the balance sheet. This balance sheet is a picture of our money at a point in time. This slide compares our money as of June 30th, 2023, to June 30th, 2022. As you can see, our assets did grow significantly, and that's primarily related to our available cash on hand increasing. Our liabilities didn't change much from fiscal year to fiscal year, and our fund balance did increase more than we had budgeted, the $5 million. That additional increase was related to our salaries and benefits coming under budget, most likely due to either vacancies or staff turnover in those positions. Diving a little bit deeper into fund balance, we commonly refer to this as our savings account. And this savings account is required to be separated into multiple buckets. So, on the graph underneath "other" is two buckets. The first bucket is non-spendable. This is money that we've already provided Ielson and Fort Wainwright for our FY '24 utilities and the inventory we have on hand at Central Warehouse that the schools can make purchases from. The other bucket underneath "other" is restricted, and that is related to our unspent student allotments. If homeschool families don't spend their allotments for 2023, they're allowed to carry those funds into the next school year as long as they remain enrolled in our homeschool program. The next category on this graph is the bucket "assigned." "Attached" relates to our purchasing commitments that we've signed with vendors for either goods or services that hadn't finished being rendered in that school year. So, those commitments are carrying forward to be completed in 2024. It also shows the amount of money we have as impact aid advance. Basically, we get a payday loan, we get our FY '24 revenue in FY '23. So, we recognize that as a sign for spending for FY '24. The last category on this graph is "unassigned." This one helps to do two big things. It helps us pay for unexpected costs. A good example of this was in 2021. Our student enrollment dropped more than 2,000 students, which reduced our foundation funding revenue $5 million from what we had budgeted that year. Luckily, because we had unassigned fund balance, we were able to cover that difference. The other thing unassigned fund balance can do is... The other thing unassigned fund balance can do is help us jumpstart new initiatives. One that we did in 2018 with our unassigned fund balance was create the Equipment Replacement Internal Service Fund. That allowed our IT department to replace our student instructional staff devices on a more predictable cycle to ensure that those devices weren't becoming archaic and troublesome for our students and staff. Just like you may have a personal goal for your emergency savings account, our district has a board policy for what we expect our unassigned fund balance to be. If we were in compliance with our board policy, our unassigned fund balance for 2023 should have been between $10 million and $14 million. We did fall a little short, but we are making an upward progress into coming in compliance with our board policy compared to some prior years. You want to jump in?
Yes, please, if I could.
Go ahead, Mr. DeGraw.
Yeah, I just wanted to provide a little context here and focus in on this slide. Not going into a lot of detail, but just give the board some information and context. Last year, the topic of fund balance became a big talking point in June. It was used as justification to, you know, not increase school funding at the state level. It's also been quoted by the governor as a reason to not look at increasing funding in the current year. He's specifically stated school districts have fund balances available. So it's important, this chart is extremely important to note the areas, the resources that the district has available to plug general fund deficits and the parts of that graph that are not available to do that. And the assigned and other categories, the blue and the green. And Ms. Marotti, I hope you take note of this. Hopefully, you're able to, yes, kudos, many kudos to Ms. Herbert for her leadership in the accounting department, but huge kudos for the accommodation here in her presentation. But it's important to note that the only dollars available to the school district to utilize for what it chooses is the unassigned $8.66 million. The other areas, again, like she mentioned, Impact Aid is probably the largest item there, and Impact Aid dollars are never available to reassign. They're always either dedicated to the current year or the next year. And so that's a really important thing to note. So fund balance will continue to be a big part of our conversation, especially with the challenging budget circumstances we have. But it's just important, I think, to note, and to know, total of about $23 million is what the audit states the district has, but we don't have $23 million to assign to a budget or to use for what we choose to use it on. Often asked, why is it important for a district to have fund balance? I won't go into detail on this at all, but we have kind of a case study popping up in the southern part of our state on why fund balance is extremely important. So I'll leave it at that.
Ms. Marotti.
Okay, one more quick question. I feel like I can't find anything, and I apologize. These slides, are they in our agenda? Or if not, can we get them so that we can study them before we speak on it?
Yes, we'll get those to you.
Awesome. Thank you so much, and thank you for the accommodation. I appreciate it.
Mr. Doran.
Okay, thank you. You were reading my mind, I think, Mr. DeGraw, on the fund balance. So for clarity on numbers, though, on the first slide, it shows about 22 or almost 23 million in general fund balance. In actuality, what is available is the $8.6 million.
That's correct.
So that is really what our fund balance was. And it's at that moment in time, being that there are other expenses. And Ms. Herbert, as you mentioned, that when enrollment, we needed to make an adjustment on revenue based on enrollment. Basically, $5 million of that eight was, became assigned. On the right track?
Yep.
So sort of having 3 million, 3.5 million?
Correct. That's kind of why I equate it to like a personal savings account. So you may have money of your own personal savings account, and just because you have 22 million, it doesn't mean that you intend to spend all of that on anything that comes up. You may specifically be setting a certain amount aside to put a down payment on a house. Well, just because you could dip into some of those, doesn't mean you can. Rent's due next month. You're not going to spend that because it has to be in your account to spend on rent next month. And so that's kind of why, when you look at that 22 million of our fund balance, we have different categories that show what our funds are committed to already. And unassigned is the one that hasn't been determined for any specific purpose yet.
Okay. So we basically finished that year with 8.5 million in the fund balance that we could use, and we needed to use 5 million of that quickly.
And that was from 2021, but yes. But the board's goal was to have an unassigned fund balance at the end of 2023, and we did accomplish that.
Right, great, thank you.
Ms. Maple.
So I know our board policy, then you said, is to have the two weeks' worth of operating costs in that bucket. Did I grasp that correctly?
No, our board policy states that we will be under the state statute limitation of 10% by 2% to 4%. So it's a formula based off of our fund balance and our general fund expenses, and it says we can't have an unassigned fund balance that exceeds 10% of our expenses. And so the board policy says that we want that percentage to be around 6% to 8%.
Okay.
So if I apply that formula and we were within that 6% to 8% range, our unassigned fund balance should have been between $10 million and $14 million.
Okay.
That comment about two weeks of operating costs, that's how many weeks we can afford on $8.6 million.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Moving on to the income statement, and where does general fund get its money from? General fund gets money from three primary sources, the largest being our state foundation. This is a revenue received based off of a formula directly tied to our student enrollment. And in 2023, we also received some additional one-time foundation funding revenue. The second major revenue source is our borough. They provide direct monetary contributions to our school district, and they also provide in-kind services for our school district as it relates to our banking and legal services. So we record that as well. And the last one is Impact Aid. Impact Aid is money we receive directly from the federal government to replace the loss of property taxes for our students who live on Ileson and Fort Wainwright. This is a really tricky one for several reasons. Impact Aid hasn't been fully funded by Congress since 1969. They determine the amount they want to allocate to Impact Aid for all districts annually. And when we have federal government budgets being stalled with continuing resolutions or government shutdowns, it can actually delay payments out to school districts because of that. So that is a tricky one to sometimes budget and/or know when all of your final payments are going to come in. For 2023, we've received our final payment for our FY21 application.
I have a question on that too, or maybe a clarification. I'd heard that our Impact Aid goes, like, the state gets it, and then they keep some? Am I correct in that? So we don't receive... I don't know.
I'm trying to get clarification, but yes, unlike some of the other school districts, ourselves, Anchorage, and Kodiak, because we have military installations, we send our Impact Aid student numbers to them for the students who live on the military installations, and they pull all of our numbers together and submit one Impact Aid application on behalf of those three districts. And trying to get a clear picture of how, what they receive and how they pass that on to us has been a work in process. They've had some staff turnover, and so we're waiting for Jared to get up to speed to help continue that conversation. For our students who are military-connected but live off-base, we're able to apply for those students directly so we can get into the system ourselves and see what the federal government is projecting for payouts for those nut students.
Ms. Burnett.
Sorry, did you say, just for clarification, that we just got Impact Aid for 2021?
Yes, Impact Aid comes in multiple different payments, and it depends on when the federal government decides to release the funding. And so the funding comes out in stages. Normally, once districts have been paid 90% of their allotment, the federal government kind of determines whether or not they're owed the additional 10%. And so that, whatever determination happened this year, the federal government finally decided to release the last 10% of our 2021 application funding to us.
Mr. DeGraw, it looked like you had something you wanted to say. You're good, okay. One question off of what you just said, that students living off-post qualify for Impact Aid as well as that only active-duty students or any student that is, like, military-connected with the guard or other branches?
So students who have parents either in active-duty or in the guard or have parents who work civil service. Those all have different funding formulas. So it depends on the student and how they're connected and where they live. Students who live on-base with their families, we receive more money from them because those families aren't having to pay property taxes. Students who live off-base, their families are paying property taxes, and so we receive less funding from them.
How do we know when a student, my own, this is why my family is Alaska Guard, but I don't know that we've ever provided that information to the school district? So how would the school district go about knowing how many students are counted for the ones that live off-post?
So our, I just lost her name. Ms. Bush just retired, but she was the one that was doing our Impact Aid surveys, and she worked directly with the military installations or the guards or the civil services to get a list. And we would work directly with the military installations to confirm the students who were eligible. And then the military government would sign off on that list, and then we would bring those lists internally and acknowledge whether or not those students accounted for regular education or for sped education because Impact Aid also changes depending on that designation as well.
I'd love to hear more about that. At some point, maybe I'll email you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So education is our top priority, so it only makes sense that we spend the majority of our expenses on instructing students. For 2023, we spent 76% of our general fund on educating our students or developing our instructional staff. That is higher than the 2023 statewide average spent on instruction. That was only 73.3% for the prior school year. The other 24% of our expenses is related to administering the school district, paying our utilities, upkeeping our building, and providing student activities such as student council, Shrek musical that's coming up. So moving on, I want to highlight two more funds. Student transportation being the first. On this slide, you can see a five-year graph of revenue versus expenses. As we alluded to earlier, student transportation receives revenue based solely on student enrollment. We do have to back out our best homeschool students, and their expenses have fluctuated a lot over the past couple of years for a variety of things. The first was when we had to shut down school for the last quarter of 2020. We were in remote learning for part of fiscal year '21. In fiscal year '22, we switched over to a new busing vendor, and then we've had the bus driver shortage for quite a while now, which prevented us from being able to fully service all of our routes. And as Dr. Minor mentioned earlier, as Durham's able to fully staff and provide all of those necessary routes, that gap you see on the graph between revenue and expenses is going to grow, meaning that we're going to spend down the rest of that 4.1 million fund balance that's currently in student transportation. Once we deplete that, it will be up to general fund to transfer additional funds into student transportation to keep it out of a deficit. Nutrition Services is the next fund. I provided a similar five-year graph showing revenue versus expenditures. Revenue for nutrition services is determined based off of the meals we serve. Lunch for our school district costs $3.50, which is half of the cost of a four-piece chicken nugget Happy Meal. If your student qualifies for free or reduced meals, the federal government does reimburse us for those costs. And 2022 does look like it's an anomaly, and that was because the federal government issued a waiver allowing all of our students to eat meals regardless of their eligibility. So our nutrition services team broke records that year with the number of meals they were preparing daily and serving our students. It was quite amazing to be over there and see their team get those meals served out. At the end of 2022, unfortunately, that waiver came to a close, and so we've seen a reduction of the meals served in 2023. That number of meals decreased about $300,000.
I think, and Mr. DeGraw had another comment he wanted to add?
Yeah, if I may.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so just what I wanted to cover has been covered by Ms. Herbert, I think, adequately. Just want to say, these two funds historically have had to be subsidized by the general fund for a variety of different reasons. We've been able to see a break from that, which has provided tremendous relief, needed relief to the general fund. But FY24 in nutrition services, for example, we're going to see that green line again exceed revenue, most likely. We have a fund balance there, so we're hopeful that we don't need to see an FY25 transfer to nutrition services, but it is very likely that we'll need to see an FY25 transportation transfer from the general fund. Again, as Ms. Herbert and Dr. Minor indicated, we've seen a temporary break from that, but we're likely going to have to return to it if we want to maintain the same transportation services that we've offered historically. So, thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Herbert.
So these numbers aren't all just figures. They tell a story about our commitment to our school district and our goals. We have a strategic plan, and I want to just highlight how all of these numbers kind of tie into showing that we're meeting our educational goals. The first being that we've been increasing the amount we spend on CTE over the past few years. Andrew Wade, who's, I think, still in the audience with us, I know has been even seeking out additional grant funds to continue expanding some of our students' career path opportunities in our school district. The next was when the district recognized that COVID was going to have an impact on our students' learning loss, and so we dedicated our additional CARES relief funds to increase the amount of summer school opportunities we provided. This shows the number of staff we hired for summer school went from about 150 pre-COVID to up to 250 for the past two school years. And the last is one that is near and dear to me. I believe everyone deserves to understand our financials, and I know that no one honestly wants to read a 200-paid ACFER. There's very few of us, Ms. Marotti. So therefore, three years ago, our department created the popular annual financial report to do just that, to try and engage our stakeholders in a way that was more meaningful to them and required less time and commitment. So I do believe this is success because when I look at our website, I do, it's not significant uptick, but I have seen an uptick in the amount of people who come to our website after publishing the popular annual financial report. So I'll take that as a win. So, thank you, guys, for letting me get nerdy about numbers with you. It's important that we all understand the district's financial landscape. It helps show us how these decisions directly impact our ability to meet our educational goals. And I'm open to more questions or feedback.
Mr. Doran.
I'm just mindful in terms of the importance of these audits and appreciate all the time that you and your department has put in on this and our partnership with the auditing firm. I think underscoring their importance, some in our community may have been following that another district ran into some issues of errors in accounting. Our audit reports basically reflect, as Mr. Kublik indicated, they've gone through in a lot of detail. So I guess the importance of having a clean audit and the work that you and your department does in terms of getting that, keeping everything straight so when the outside firm looks at it, they can say it's there. So that's kind of an, my question basically is... So, it's kind of an, my question basically is, some assurance that we're on the right track and would not be looking at some of those surprise errors that another district has unfortunately experienced, and they're correcting them.
I think it's very important that we have an independent perspective on our financials. Even within our own department, we always talk about professional skepticism, trust but verify. So, our auditors trust that we're doing the right thing, but they want to actually confirm that we're doing the right thing and not just give us a pat on the back. And so, they do dedicate their time to meeting with our staff and our grant managers to ensure that we're on the right track, to being good stewards of our financials.
Thank you, and congratulations on another job well done.
Thank you.
Ms. Maradi?
I know I ask a lot of questions, but I'm always incredibly proud to speak about the work that you guys do in our accounting department. On such a short staff, we've been told that we need more in our accounting department and our purchasing departments, and we don't have the funds for that right now. And you guys still keep quality work, award-winning work every year. And congratulations on a management letter with no recommendations. That's typically not normal. So, it was very surprising, but I'm very, very proud of you guys for the hard work that you do, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Burnett?
I'd just like to also reiterate those sentiments. People have been very well aware of things that are happening in Juneau with that school district, and I just thank you for not making us them. You guys do a great job.
Thank you to the county department and yourself for doing such an excellent job, and this presentation was fantastic, and I learned a lot from it. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no further, we can't call the rule yet, because I still have to ask if there is anyone in the audience that would like to provide public comment on this item. Seeing what? Seeing none, public comment is, oh, is now closed. Mr. Doran, did you have something?
When it comes back to the board.
All right. Coming back to the board, are there any other closing, or any other comments? Mr. Doran?
I just want to underscore the amount, percentage spent for instruction. I think that says a lot for our district that we have always, at least my experience within this district over several multiple decades, we have always exceeded the state target and the state average. And so, my commendation to administration and our teachers, our support staff, who all really work hard, that we're able to really primarily focus on instruction, which is our entire purpose. Really well done.
Seeing no further comment. Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Ms. Maradi?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried.
Thank you again.
Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
The next item on our agenda is the approval of the 2024-2025 legislative priorities. Our goal is to ensure student and staff, to ensure student, staff, family, and communities are informed, connected, and engaged with the district. The board's legislative committee met on December 11th, 2023, to review, update, and develop the 2024-2025 legislative priorities. The committee's draft legislative priorities document is before the board for approval. May I have a motion?
Move to approve the 2024-2025 legislative priorities.
Second. Is there any public comment on this item at this time? Seeing none, public comment is now closed, and I will throw it back to the board. I guess I can speak on it as the chair of the legislative committee. It was a robust discussion, and it was really great to have so many stakeholders in the room and to see so much commonality in what our priorities were. And I think that speaks pretty clearly within the document that was presented today. And I really want to thank Ms. Rebecca Herbie for putting it together, and I know that she is doing all of the other fancy rat card and communication things once this is approved for us to be able to take and bring down to Juneau and use our advocacy efforts. The biggest takeaways, which should be no surprise, since we say it multiple times in every meeting, were that we really wanted an increase to the base student allocation and to address the vast amounts, like Ms. Ramos pointed out, of deferred maintenance, some of, you know, $300 million of deferred maintenance over many years. More support for the Alaska REEDS Act, which is a justification for the increased BSA, because $30 really does not cover what is needed to tackle the mandate of that legislation. And then, the second priority, I think, is equally as important, which is making Fairbanks as well as Alaska a state where teachers want to work and want to stay and want to retire. As somebody who is in this retirement system, that cannot be ignored any longer. It is definitely playing a part in why we are having trouble with recruiting and retaining our excellent educators. Would anyone else from the committee have anything to add to that? Ms. Maple?
I just wanted to share that my experience in that committee meeting was a testament to Ms. Hardy's role as our board president. We were in that meeting and went through, and a lot, everybody was sharing their thoughts. And I was sitting there thinking, well, we need six more of these meetings so that I can like make sense of all the things that was just said. And Ms. Hardy listened to the exact same room as me and then was able to recite back a very concise list of everything that had been said and how that should be mapped out. And it was really impressive, and it saved everybody a lot of time and pain. And now we have this document put together thanks to you running a really fantastic committee meeting, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments from the board at this time? Mr. Doran? Looks like you first, Ms. Maradi.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree. It was a great meeting, lots of opinions, and I appreciate the compromise that we're seeing today. I had a quick question, or I guess an ask through the chair for opinion. It appears that the second bullet in number two is actually in the first paragraph. Also, is the second bullet then needed?
Can you restate that? I'm confused.
Yeah, so, in priority number two, the second bullet is that there's teacher shortage, and it's important that the school districts be competitive employers. And it states that in the first paragraph as well. So, my question is, is it needed?
Do we have to amend this document to make changes, or can we just make suggestions? Okay. Mr. Doran, did you have an opinion on that?
Yes, I did.
All right. Please feel free to share.
I lean towards making suggestions, because, I mean, I'll have a couple of comments that I think might be along those, rather than getting into a lot of wordsmithing, the concepts themselves, as long as we're in agreement on that. If we want to change the concept, I would suggest we do an amendment. But if it's basically within the spirit of what's there, let's, I think it can be wordsmithed later, is what I would suggest.
Ms. Burnett?
I'd agree with Ms. Maradi that the second bulletin point there in the number two priority probably is not needed, considering it is there in the first paragraph. And while we're at it, I would maybe also suggest that we just do a little flipperoo of the Alaska REEDS Act and deferred maintenance. Not that I find the Alaska REEDS Act or deferred maintenance any less important than each other, but considering the temperature as of today, I think that any chances we have at education funding will be through the Alaska REEDS Act, and we should bump that up in priorities.
See your hand, Ms. Maple. One thing, Ms. My brain went, Herbie, there we go. I'm sorry. Are you taking notes, or do you want someone to collect these things? I don't want it to come at you faster.
I'm taking.
So, maybe just a question of process? Are you, do we, I'm sorry if I'm, if you said it and I missed it. I was having a hard time hearing, catching some of it. Are you going to need to make a motion, or is it just we'll have one overall?
It's, I agree with Mr. Doran's consensus, as long as the meat of it stays the same, that taking out a section that's a repeat or those type of things, we're totally fine with that. I know you're going to turn this into future other documents, so it's not going to be a single white sheet of paper when we're handing it out.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm going to be able to come back and listen to the audio, so I have the document up, and I'm like, I'm listening to you all, so I'll go ahead and I'm taking notes as you guys are speaking, and I'm going to go back and listen to the audio. And then, of course, I'll be able to run it by Dr. Minor to make sure I have, we have the same understanding.
Sounds great. I just wanted to make sure we weren't moving too fast for anybody. Ms. Maple?
I was just going to share with the rest of the board that in our, in that committee meeting, one of the things that we clarified was that this sheet is for our use. So, the way that we prioritize these things often will depend on whose office we're in. And then, there's another pretty document in the works that's more concise, fewer words for us to actually share directly. So, especially like in getting into the way that this document actually looks, knowing that this is more for us as we're preparing for conversations and less for public consumption, so.
Thank you. Ms. Maradi?
Thank you. I wanted to, I hear what Ms. Maple's saying, and I also want to throw support to Ms. Burnett in prioritizing Alaska REEDS for the same reason. HB 247 is actually a bill that's trying to be passed that would fund K through third grade students an additional $1,000 in funding. And I, it does appear that this may have some support, and if that's where we can throw support as well, I think that's a, will be an interesting compromise. So, I do support moving that up in priority, whether that, however Ms. Herbie does her magic, if that could be noted.
Mr. Doran?
And you can tell me how many to go and then move me around, because I have a couple of observations. Basically, I want to thank the legislative committee for this and the work, the support from administration. And I think these are all important points. But a couple of observations that I wanted to make is, I think, looking and considering that our number one priority is learning and instruction. And as we hear commentary, including the governor's just release of his priorities for the legislative session, really, it's a focus on learning. And when, talked to a lot of the legislators there, you know, how are kids doing? What are we doing and that? So, I would suggest that we already have it in here, so conceptually, I didn't think that we would need, so just putting it out there, that we have our, I would say, number one priority, or at least in our priorities, learning and instruction. I think the Alaska REEDS Act goes right under that, is very committed to it. But all of these are part of learning and instruction. Without the staff, we can't provide a learning and instructional opportunity for kids. So, I think if we can, you know, when I listen to legislators, I listen to the state board, I listen to the governor, you know, there's a lot of thing about how our students are performing. That's our concern, and I think let's meet them on that. But if they're going to do it, then let's also make very clear that we need that investment, that education funding. We need to, if we're going to have staff, we have to compensate them. And so, I think packaging it in that sense, from what is the context? Why is the money important? Because that's what we get asked. So, that's kind of my overall comment. Then I wanted, had some questions. Okay. So, on the base student allocation, the 73-73 figure, I believe that is taking the AASB and the Anchorage one that is increasing the BSA by $1,413. I just want to make sure that we are consistent in our numbers. That 1,413 was, reflects a 22.81% inflation factor cumulative since the 2017 BSA. That, and adjusted for that $30, is based on the Alaska urban CPI. When we say it's 16% for our district, is that reflective of the same number? We're making, you know, I just want to have a consistency, and I think it's important for that, so we don't confuse the legislators. So, the, that 1,413 is, we're going into our ninth year of stagnant funding, except for the $30, and is actually equivalent of 22.81%, which is an Alaska-certified number. If anything, I would expect ours to be higher than that percentage, and if we are higher than that, that's fine, but I think otherwise, I would use those percentages, so.
Mr. DeGraw, did you have?
So, yeah, the two things that immediately come to mind are the 22% number is a statewide number. We are in a relatively urban area compared to much of the rest of the state, and so oftentimes, the cost increases are less than rural areas that are encountering, in reality, significantly higher cost increases. The second thing that comes to mind is it's extremely difficult to put a specific percentage increase to the cost of the school district, because what we're doing now compared to seven years ago is completely different. And so, to go in and attempt to really calculate cost increases from seven years ago is nearly an impossible task. I would just say that a 16% increase to our costs seven years ago is equivalent to $30 to $35 million. So, if you take, you know, if we were around $200 million general fund budget, a little over $200 million, apply that to, apply 16% to that, you're upwards of $35 million in cost increases. So, yeah, you're, it's kind of herding cats, especially trying to compare statewide CPI numbers compared to actual district cost increases. It's like herding cats, but I believe we're in the ballpark. And really, it's impossible to really align and mesh the two numbers exactly together.
Clarify for me?
Go ahead, Mr. Doran.
Okay. That 22.81% is based on the Alaska urban CPI, not statewide, so it's Anchorage, and that's how the 1,413 figure has been calculated. Yes, rural areas actually expect, can expect higher, we might even be higher than that, but I would say if we're using the 1,413 increase, our reference then should be not necessarily our district, but taking the Alaska urban CPI. That's the one that's being presented as a consistent point. It is actually lower than the US urban, but it's an Alaska reference point that has been used in the past for the legislature. So, I would just suggest, and that we use that, and it's actually covers nine years, because it's going, we're going into our ninth year since they were done.
Go ahead, Ms.
So, then, then my suggestion would be to take out the actual cost increases to the school district, then?
Yep.
And I don't think that materially changes what it is. So, instead of saying what our district cost increase is, going and saying what the urban CPI, kind of what AASB put out as their CPI, kind of what AASB put out as their reasoning behind it for that bullet point, I think.
Yeah.
Were there any, you hadn't, right? You already did yours. Okay. Any other comments? Mr. Burgess?
Yeah, I just wanted to put my support behind Mr. Doran's comments, particularly about framing this in terms of education and instruction. I am putting my support there because when I went to tour schools with one of our legislators, one of the points that, or one of the things that he kept saying was that nobody has been able to tell him what it is, what product they're buying essentially, what, what they're getting by funding education. And so I think that framing it in terms of this is, this is how we intend to spend this money, or this is the benefit to instruction and, and education, might be an important thing to reach certain representatives. And so I would, I would support putting that kind of framing into this document.
Mr. Doran?
Thank you. Based on some of the comments earlier this evening, I would suggest that transportation be added in to the funding piece as a separate bullet. Because if we're having to fund it out of the BSA, basically, that's a loss in the BSA. It is a separate, a separate piece that the legislature has not supported and increased over the years. So I would, I think that's an important one to put in that's not forgotten.
Did you have something, Mr. Dr. Minert?
I'm just curious how we're collecting these themes as we move through this process. If it becomes more and more broad, I might suggest that we do go through a more formal process. I like your idea of adding transportation, but I don't want to usurp, you know, the work that's been done previously. And so I would need, you know, more of a clear directive from the board whether or not they would want us to add that transportation piece.
Yeah. I would agree with that, that that is beyond, so that we would probably need a motion. And I will say, in the current draft of the joint BSA, joint resolution, transportation is mentioned in there as a key priority. So I would be in support of adding it here. Ms. Maradi?
Yeah, I support, I also support increasing, adding transportation. SB 52 is a bill that's trying to be passed that would increase transportation funding by 8 million. We would all like more, but that would be a great supplement to our, our current bill of 800,000 this year. So.
Is there someone who would like to make a motion?
Move to add transportation as a bullet point to our legislative priorities.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this motion? Ms. Maple?
I just want to proceed with caution, you know, moving forward, that part of the, our committee meeting was to rein things in and to make this really digestible and really presentable. And acknowledge that in any meetings that we have with any legislators, we're able to bring whatever, I mean, whatever within a reasonable purview that is relevant for these conversations. So I, and I do see the relevance and importance of that one, but I do just want to express my, I don't know what the right word is, trepidation. I just don't, I want to make sure it stays a really concise, easy to, to, a document that's easy for us to take with us into conversations as we all move forward.
Ms. Burnett?
I support Ms. Maple's comments.
Mr. Doran?
I really appreciate the reminder that we don't want to get too broad, but I think, and I want to be cognizant, I guess my previous comments of saying, let's not get too down in the weeds of amending all the things. But I think this is an important bullet, and it's one that some of the legislators are aware of, others, it slides by pretty quickly. When they're looking at the base student allocation is real, is the first. But, but this is an important thing that has slid even further back, I believe, than the 2017 BSA. So being, being aware of, not to get too long, but I think it is an important one.
Is there any other comment on this? I guess, before we throw it to the vote, my last one was, I, point well taken, Ms. Maple. I, I don't want us to make this. That was one of our big discussions, too cumbersome. I was looking at the draft joint resolution because I know I've seen it and I'm not sure I helped make it. How many other? Well, I know who has access to it and the rest of you won't, but I can speak on it now in open meetings so that you're aware. That it, it addresses at the end, raising the base student allocation by that same number and increasing transportation funding by at least $270 per pupil to $1,170 per pupil. And so those are the top two within that resolution, which is important. And then the therefore further resolved covers another five things. I don't think we need to add everything else that we're asking for, but I do know that we're already hearing that we'll have to offset transportation with our general fund and that our students really rely on transportation. I think as long as we're all cognizant, it's not a bad idea. Any other? Okay, seen them. Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote on the motion to add transportation as a legislative priority?
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
No.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Ms. Maradi?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carried.
So back to the main motion. Was there any other comment on legislative priorities? Mr. Doran?
Looking at the staff recruitment and retention, and I think this is already included. We're not, I'm not adding something to it. But I think it addresses a concern that came up earlier when I looked at this, is yes, the retirement package is important. And I'm going to say it should be educators as opposed to teachers, because this is an issue for teachers and for educational support staff. I'm not wedded to saying, whether we want to say teachers and or, but it's educators broader. The, the second bullet, and I, I think, yes, in some ways it's a little redundant, but I think bringing the concept in there that we have to provide compensation, not only benefits, retirement is a benefit, but we have to address compensation and benefits for, for educators. You know, we recognize the inflationary costs. We've held things back, compensation, and people have continued to lose it, lose their purchasing power. If we are going to be competitive, some of this BSA is going to pay salaries. And I think, you know, when we hear legislators say, well, we want to give money, but we don't want them to go to the teachers, or we don't want them to go to the educators, that's a fallacy. And I think that maybe adjusting that second bullet to be clearer that, yes, besides retirement program, we have to be able to pay our staff. And so, again, I don't want to get into wordsmithing, but I think the concept is consistent with what we're talking about being competitive. It should be looked at. And, and that should be, make sure we include, whatever term we use, that we include teachers and education support staff. They are all educators, all, we all need them.
Ms. Maradi?
Thank you. I support Mr. Doran's request to change teachers to educators to make it inclusive. I have a question about, let's see, it's the, it's the third bullet under priority number one, Alaska REEDS Act support. And then it's the second bullet under that. We are saying this unfunded mandate is difficult to provide. Now, I will be the first person to scream from the rooftops that $30 per student was not sufficient for the requirements of this act, but it, it, I'm not sure unfunded is the correct word. Underfunded might be more accurate, but I worry that unfunded makes us look a little ungrateful for the small amount that that was provided. I'm saying this in the best way I can.
Mr. Doran?
I like underfunded. I, I think that's a good catch. Because in, in essence, really, the BSA is there to fund the Alaska REEDS Act. And I find it of interest that the bill to provide $1,000 that's proposed right now, prefiled, to give $1,000 for each student K through three who are non-proficient, it doesn't fund having proficient students. It costs this money to get them proficient, to teach them. And so I think that's an important thing. And, and when we talk about the Alaska REEDS Act, that yes, it is a good, strong talking point. It is costing us more money, and I would suggest that it's worth having a, an approximate dollar amount, what it's costing us, that we've had to put in from the district to, to do that, provide those services. But that part of our learning and instruction is not just reading. It's math, it's science, it's social studies, it's, you know, arts, it's, you know, we go on with a CTE, that there are much broader skills. We're not just funding Alaska REEDS. We need the money to fund instruction, learning comprehensively interdisciplinary. So I, I think that as we look at that, I guess why I say our concept highlighted is, our focus is on instruction. It's on kids' learning. And I would make that forward because I think we can really make the case to the, to the legislators and the governor.
Ms. Maradi?
Just a suggestion, the third bullet under Alaska REEDS Act, it states the required MTSS process. I am not sure all legislators know what that means. If there's a way, maybe we could just take it out actually, because it, it explains it later. So implement the required opportunities for assessing student learning data, et cetera, or however you want to word it. But if you are going to leave that in, you might want to spell it out.
Are there any other comments or questions from the board? Seen none. Ms. Richardson? Wait, did we do public comment?
Yes.
Okay. Second guessing myself. Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote? On the legislative priorities as amended.
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Ms. Maradi?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a resolution honoring Career and Technical Education Month. Our core value is to be innovative and adaptive to student needs. School Board Resolution 2024-15 honors Career Technical Education CTE Month and proclaims February 2024 Career Technical Education Month. May I have a motion?
Move to approve Resolution 2024-15 honoring Career and Technical Education Month.
Second.
Thank you. And I know we've had somebody waiting. If there is any public comment on this item, I wonder if you don't want to. That's okay. The original author is in the audience, so shout out, thank you. It's Andrea Wade, right? To Ms. Andrea Wade, who is our Director of Career Technical Education. And thank you so much for bringing this month to the board's attention. This will be the first time, hopefully, that we pass this resolution, but not the last. Mr. Doran, would you mind reading?
Sure. Resolution 2024-15 honoring Career and Technical Education CTE Month. Whereas the month of February is nationally recognized as Career and Technical Education CTE Month, aimed at fostering public awareness regarding the significance of CTE classes and acknowledging the accomplishments and contributions of these educational programs. And whereas students within the Fairbanks North Starborough School District are afforded the opportunity to engage in a diverse array of CTE classes, including but not limited to architecture and construction, arts AV, automotive technology, engineering, health science, hospitality, and information technology. And whereas the spectrum of CTE education spans various modalities encompassing traditional classroom learning, certification programs, and hands-on work-based learning experiences outside of the classroom settings. And whereas students participating in CTE programs benefit from authentic, meaningful experiences that enhance the quality of their education, elevate their skills of engagement, and contribute to heightened academic achievement. And whereas data indicates that students in the state of Alaska who pursue a minimum of two classes within CTE pathways have a graduation rate of 96.9%. And whereas CTE equips students with a blend of academic, technical, and employability skills essential for genuine career readiness. And whereas CTE facilitates early education, early career exploration, enabling students to make well-informed decisions about their academic coursework and pursue established programs of study and career pathways. And whereas projections from the Bureau of Labor Statistics Occupational Handbook forecast that many of the fastest-growing jobs through 2025 will be in CTE fields. And whereas leaders in business and industry in Alaska acknowledge the escalating challenges related to addressing the skills gap and connecting qualified professionals with opportunities in critical and burgeoning CTE-related fields. And whereas CTE programs play a pivotal role in preparing students for rewarding careers by providing integrated programs of study that bridge secondary and post-secondary education, leading to the attainment of industry-recognized credentials. And whereas the implementation of CTE programs ensures a qualified and dynamic workforce, contributing to the strength and competitiveness of both Alaska and the Fairbanks North Starborough economies. And therefore, be it resolved, that the Fairbanks North Starborough School District Board of Education hereby adopts this resolution officially designating February as National Career and Technical Education CTE Month. During this month and throughout the year, the board encourages our schools and community to celebrate the unwavering commitment to excellence in career and technical education of our district's CTE students and educators, and the positive impact their efforts have on workforce development and economic growth within the Fairbanks North Starborough and across Alaska.
Are there any board comments? Mr. Burgess?
So I fully support this as a supporter of CTE and the Chair of the Curriculum Committee. I know that there's a couple of things we might get to add to that in the future. And I'm going to apologize because I have a couple nitpicky grammar nerd slash science nerd things here. One is that data, the word data is plural. Should I make a motion to amend? Or are we good?
I don't think we need to make a motion for grammatical errors, but we can definitely clean that up.
Thanks.
Ms. Maple?
I had the opportunity before the holiday break to go out and tour North Pole High School, and I got with the Chamber of Commerce, so different hat. But I got to be in a tour group with Ms. Wade and with Ms. Blaine and learn about all of the programs out there. And that was kind of my first up-close and personal introduction and understanding of the programs that our district has, of some of the CTE programs specifically out at North Pole High School. And it was enlightening. And so I was really glad to see this come across, come across the agenda and get to vote on it tonight. So thank you.
Ms. Burnett?
I just wanted to throw my support behind this big time. I am a student of a CTE school, and it has changed tenfold since I was in school. And I love the progress that CTE has made and how it's no longer just like a, like you can only get CTE through a certain school. You can now get CTE in every school that we have here, high school-wise. And it's, even middle schools are offering pathways to it. And it's just amazing. It opens up so many doors for the future for our students. So I am thankful for this resolution. Thank you, Ms. Wade, and proud to support it.
Ms. Marotti?
I'm just curious. I know that we talked about an aviation CTE program. Is that in the works? Where's that at?
I actually asked that question here recently as well. And so Ms. Wade could probably speak to it more, but it is a challenge area for us, one, in finding the instructors that could potentially teach that class. We've tried to partner with UAF some on the mechanic side, but they also have a huge waitlist just to get into their program. And so a lot of it's driven by trying to find an instructor to carry out that program and make sure it's sustainable. One of the things before creating or implementing a new pathway is looking at the sustainability of the program, and so that's been a challenge for us. We know it's a huge need in industry, and once we feel like we have a path forward in creating a sustainable program, I know, me personally, I would be passionate about including that in our pathways. I also know sometimes I get the question about, oh, does West Valley also offer CTE programs? And so here, next week in the board update, I'll share the breakdown for second semester of what our CTE classes are at each high school. West Valley in second semester currently has 31 sections of CTE. Its Arts AV is being offered, culinary, health sciences, and engineering. So lots of CTE happening at all of our schools.
I think I can put myself in the queue to that aviation as a pilot's wife. Definitely support that. And I'm not sure if we've reached out to, like, the Civil Air Patrol. That's a great way to, even if it's not a class, they're always very interested in being involved in our classrooms, and they do offer a free flight for students. It's a great program. Getting back in my thoughts. To the resolution, I was so happy to see it brought forward. I started my teaching career at Hutchinson High School as a special educator, and I watched CTE there transform lives for my students and for the general population of Hutchinson. And I had multiple siblings also graduate from Hutchinson, and I know the impact that it had on their lives and that it really wasn't a thing when I was going to school. And it wasn't a thing for some of my, from a very large family, so some of the siblings closer to my age, where had they been able to take a CNA class and graduate high school with a CNA certification like we can now, that would have put them light years ahead on their track to becoming a nurse. So I am so proud that this is something that our district does and that we do so well. And to a comment Mr. Burgess said earlier, you know, legislators are asking, well, what are we buying? This is what we're buying. We're buying workforce development. We're buying a stronger Alaska. We hear all the time about the outmigration, and programs like CTE are what help students feel grounded in Alaska to join our unions, to become part of our workforce, even if they're not wanting to go to college right away. And a lot of students, it's not mutually exclusive. They join our unions, and then they go and they get their degrees, and there's not one right path. But we prepare our students to be a part of a modern-day workforce, and CTE is a huge part of that. Are there any other comments from the board? Seeing none. Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
The next item on our agenda is the Board Budget Committee Report. Our core value is engage with students, family, and staff and communities to support student success. Chief Operations Officer Andy DeGraw will present the board's fiscal year 2025 Budget Committee Report. May I have a motion? Maybe there, it's a report. Sorry, there's no motion. I'm trying. All right. Mr. DeGraw, could you please?
Thank you, President Hardy. Yeah, so I will, you have your, the Budget Committee Report in your packet there. It's a three-pager this year. I'll just go through, give a highlight summary of the report for the board. So the first page goes into basically the scope and function of the committee. So just kind of guidelines, identifies the role of the committee, what their purpose is as a committee, gives some general working principles as guidelines, you know, recognizing strategic plan, keeping student welfare and success at the forefront of what they're doing and whatnot. And then the bottom paragraph of that front page talks about the timeline that the committee met, as well as the, some of the specific activities that they engaged in during the various meetings. So the committee met four times through the months of October and November this year. They heard some budget reports or departmental reports from different departments, and we talked to kind of budget impacts, opportunities for investment, impacts if there were cuts to those departments and whatnot. So hearing those reports and through other discussion, the committee identified priorities to discuss and to provide feedback and recommendations on. Those items entail pages two and three. And so the five different areas that the committee identified are listed out there. So pupil-to-teacher ratio, that being the top priority. And then just identifying the importance of that, obviously, in any, in any environment, but more importantly, even this year, in the coming years, with the Alaska Reads Act coming online, that being especially important. And then instructional workforce excellence was identified as well. Learning and instruction, revenue expectations. So there, the committee laid out, you know, just different expectations they had on revenue, both at the local level as well as at the state level. And then organizational considerations, which really kind of focused in on, there was discussion around things like contracting out custodial services, school closure, and some limited conversation on school year calendar. So it's the instructional calendar for student contact days. Those were the different topics that were, that were discussed. And then at the end of the report, it identifies the next meeting that the committee will gather. The meeting date will be February 22nd. There, the committee will review the proposed budget, which will be public by then, and then talk about different things like lobbying, advocacy efforts, and then kind of the legislative updates that we'll have at that point. And we'll likely, possibly have some updated revenue and cost estimates, but that's not necessarily guaranteed. So that is the report in a nutshell. And Mr. Doran chaired the committee, so I'm sure a lot of questions can go to him as well, and he can provide insights onto the, into the discussions and priorities of the committee.
Thank you, Mr. DeGraw. Mr. Doran, would you like to speak?
Yeah, I want to thank Mr. DeGraw, Ms. Nelson, and all the committee members. They were good conversations, and I want to underscore the fact that actually, throughout it, people had in mind the district's strategic plan and the focus on learning and instruction for students. And in a lot of the different things, it's kind of weighing out pros and cons with some stuff. Really, what are the, that we look as we go through budget? What are the cost-benefit offsets? It may save money, but it may not be good for instruction. You know, and how do we make those decisions in looking at that? And so that was a very, very important lens that they had there. The other thing I wanted to mention is, in terms of the organizational considerations at number five section, yes, a variety of concepts to look at. But what was valuable with that as well was the, it spurred a broader conversation about looking at our organization, you know? Should be K-8 schools? Should it be, you know, what's good for instruction? And I'm just putting, that was just an idea tossed out. I think it was less a specific thing to go to as in terms of saying, oh, we can look at these in a lot of different ways. And if we had had maybe a couple more months, we would have gone on and gotten into, you know, some real in-depth discussion. But it prompted that thinking. And again, through that and in the other aspects, it very much came to saying, what does it mean, what do each of these things mean to students? And I want to give a shout out especially to our student rep, who really spoke as a student. And when people, you know, said, well, what do you think? He didn't shy away from that. And I think that underscores the importance of having students on these, on these committees. So this doesn't capture everything that we covered and discussed. I look forward to the 22nd of February, when the committee comes back, to actually look at the proposed budget. And we'll look at a way of making sure that that conversation is also conveyed back to the board, where we'll be right in the middle of our budget hearings and work sessions on the budget, et cetera. So we'll make sure that comes back. I want to make sure that the, the committee members feel that they have a voice on that, too. And, and I'll leave it there and see if there are questions from the board.
Ms. Burnett?
Thank you, President Hardy. Through the chair to Mr. Doran. So first, when I read this, I totally read this and Doran. I just wanted to say that. Totally read this and Tim Doran. What I got from this is a very, and forgive me if this is a really lack of a better word, but a very wishy-washy response. And I would expect such, considering what we are facing. But what I'm seeing is, don't close schools, this needs to be a multi-year process, what is the cost-benefit? What is the benefit to students? What is the benefit to learning? But then literally in the next paragraph, it's, close schools, look at the utilization, and do this. So I see that the Budget Committee is going to meet again on February 22nd, but we are really, I know that we're not supposed to be in necessarily a hurry to make decisions, but a budget report more than just this before the 22nd might be nice. I know that maybe the Budget Committee might not be meeting before then. It's just, we've got a lot on our plate and a lot of things coming up budget-wise that I think we need to have a more solid response than a, maybe this, but maybe not this. It's just kind of how I took it and how I got from it. And I, again, I'm not trying to hurry through and just say, let's do this. But the response wasn't necessarily a response, if that makes sense.
Yes, I, you know, in some ways, I think the most specific came out in terms of revenue expectations, that area, to really give us guidelines or their perspective on that. They came in the middle on that. I think you're right on school closures. There was discussion on, there was no conclusion on that. And things that kept coming up is, that's a really, really big deal. It was recognized that that can't be off the table, but it can't be jumped at. And, you know, one example is conversation when you just talk about occupancy, square footage. That's not how our schools operate, because a lot of our classrooms are occupied by groups that are smaller than a regular 25, 30-student class size. And how our building is used, you know, an example who came up in terms of Alaska Reads Act, if you need tutoring areas, those types of things, that space is being used. And you can't just say, oh, well, it's got X room in it. It does have, there was also conversation regarding that about parent engagement, because they are heavily impacted. And also that one may look at saying, oh, well, this school looks, yeah, that one should be, it may not be the one, because we have to look across the, the whole district. And so it wasn't ruling those out. It wasn't ruling out some of the other considerations under that organizational piece. Actually, as I mentioned, it did spur some little further conversation. But it was recognizing that there are different aspects to it. And we may get, after the February meeting, and they have time to take a look at the proposed budget, they may have more specifics, that they would say, oh, yeah, continue on this, or whatever, or did you consider this? But in terms of just looking at that big piece of, what are the factors that go into considering the budget as opposed to saying, eliminate this or add that specific? But we did want to, as a committee, wanted to get a little bit further along in terms of, and I think that's where that revenue piece was, to really get their general feeling on, do we go, we have nothing and we're going to have to? Or do we say, this is, you know, do we shoot for the moon? Or do we come in? And they basically said, no, come in with some reasonable, there's risk to it. We may decide otherwise, but that was their.
May I follow up with one more?
Go ahead.
Through the chair to Mr. Doran. I would be, as the Chair of the Parental Engagement Committee, I would be very interested in having the feedback from your next committee meeting and possibly even take it to the Parental Engagement Committee and get some community members involved with that. So thank you. Thank you for understanding what I was getting at and what I was asking. I appreciate that.
Good, good question. And I would, if I might, I would say that some committee members would have liked us to have more specifics. Some, you know, wouldn't, were, well, I don't know about that one, and so we tried to capture the, that conversation, because again, we're not in the position quite of getting into the nickel and dime. But, but there's some frustration also that would love to say, yes, do this. But based on the information that we had, to give some guideline to administration. And that's also why, even though we weren't, we didn't have the written report ready, we wanted to capture, and I did those verbal reports to, so it would help the administration to, as we move forward. And then for us, once we see that budget. But PTR was one very specific that came up, although they didn't say how, what size.
Ms. Marotti?
Thank you, and thank you to everyone that put this work forward and brought it to us. I agree with Ms. Burnett. I appreciate the Budget Committee so very much and feel that, in fact, they deserve more time. And I hope that the board can consider hearing from them again.
And then for us, once we see that budget. But PTR was one very specific that came up, although they didn't say how size, what size.
Ms. Maradi.
Thank you, and thank you to everyone that put this work forward and brought it to us. I agree with Ms. Burnett. I appreciate the Budget Committee so very much and feel that, in fact, they deserve more time. And I hope that the Board can consider hearing from them again. That would not be the norm usually. It's the, it's this memo and then we, we move forward. But I, for one, would appreciate hearing from them again after, after we, after the, the administration presents the rec, the recommended budget. I'd like to hear from them again. Specifically, I personally want to hear their perspective on what to cut, what needs to be protected, and what investments they'd like the Board to consider. I know that the Budget Committee is not one to get into the, into the weeds, but this work can't be done without their perspective. And if that includes things in the weeds that are significant and material, I, I want to hear it. I want to hear stakeholder input, and the Budget Committee is where we get that from when it comes to the budget. So I'm hoping that we can consider hearing from them again, in those specific areas at least. I have questions about the memo, if I could ask them through the chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Can you explain what the memo means when it says the district should consider demographic shifts and look into new ways to attract and retain its staff?
Through the chair.
Okay. Andy's got a...
Yeah, I can, I can respond to that. So it would be things in the recruiting world, such as bonuses, things like, you know, we haven't delved into this territory yet before, but remote work options, you know, things, things that are becoming more attractive as the workforce is evolving. But, you know, I will say this, and I'm, I'm sure there's other areas, specifics other than just bonuses, hiring bonuses, but that would be something, if we were to go down that road in a significant way, that would be something very out of the ordinary for this school district. And sometimes we have a hard time thinking outside the box, but, you know, as discussions go on, it, more and more, we need to consider these things that we haven't necessarily done in the past, because things are changing around us. We don't, much of our staff, we don't recruit and attract right here in town. Some of them we do, but many folks, especially in the professional ranks, we, we are attempting to attract from outside of Fairbanks, outside the state of Alaska even. And so I think more and more, we have to think creatively and outside the box and do things that we maybe haven't considered in the past in order to recruit quality staff.
And that's what you mean by, I'm sorry, may I follow up?
Go ahead.
That's what you mean by demographic shifts?
Correct, yeah. And, and you know, COVID changed how the workforce sees things as well. So, you know, that's, that's a pretty deep talk, but I'm sure Ms. McDaniel could talk too for a while, but we won't get into that.
Ms. Maradi, go ahead.
Thank you. My next one, if someone could explain through the chair, developing life skills as more encompassing than post-secondary academic and CTE preparation. Is the Budget Committee saying that developing life skills is more important or higher priority than post-secondary academic and CTE preparation?
Mr. Doran.
Actually, that came up at multiple meetings, and specifically as life skills that are beyond, you know, how do you, how do you live? How do you get along? How do you, that school is more than just the, the core disciplines, but that students are learning skills that they can also implement in how they conduct their life, how they can support a family, get a house, apartment, I mean, how do you apply for jobs? I mean, those are, there were broader skills they wanted to recognize besides what we, you know, in, in some ways, it's the soft skills. As I think about it, it goes right back to CTE. And in lots of ways, the employability skills. You know, so it was, it came up multiple times from multiple members that, yes, what they get in class is more than just that knowledge or that one, you know, they, they can weld, but they also have to do other things. How do they get that job to weld, you know, et cetera? So that, that's generally the concept that came up.
May I follow up on that?
Go ahead.
Thank you for the clarification. It makes a lot more sense now. And, and I agree, I do know that we do offer that in our district, that it is a, in our CTE pathways. It's embedded in our CTE classes. As a parent of someone that went through the CTE HUT programs, I can attest that they do teach them a lot of those skills. I do think, though, we could expand. So just to clarify any miscommunication, we do have those, but I agree, we could expand greatly. And I just want to make one more statement and wrap it up. That'd be the last thing I say, if that's all right. It, it sounds like the committee did not have enough time to robustly and accurately provide all of the stakeholder input that they could, could have provided. And so I'd love for the Board also to consider, not only bringing them back, but also maybe next year, starting sooner, if that's humanly possible, I'm not quite sure, but to give them more time. Because I feel like every year, we're up against a deadline, and this year in particular, it just seemed really rushed. The product seems like it was rushed, and I am grateful and just want to give that committee the service that it deserves.
Ms. Burnett?
I full-heartedly support Ms. Maradi's request.
Mr. Doran?
Okay. Thanks for the feedback, because I think this is important, and it underscores the importance of having that February meeting. And it also, your questions bring to the fore, the committee is not in a position to solve all of these. When we talk about recruitment, there's a lot of different things, retention of staff, there's a lot of different ways that can, that can be done. But the important thing is that we have to do something. And so how that's reflected in the budget will, is really important. And the, we, we did, and I appreciate the administration streamlined some of their presentations so we could have more conversation than just listening. Some of that is important, because they were responding to questions that committee members brought up. But I think, and I appreciate the, the piece of saying that we need to hear, now, once we get it in the nickels and dimes that'll come in the proposed budget, they can look at that with a more specific eye. Prior to it, it's providing the framework for the administration to put things together. And, and again, I really want to say that I appreciate the makeup of the committee in terms of people who are bringing the perspective from our community. But mixed with the importance of having people who are living a day-to-day in the classroom and on the workforce excellence, the question there, that really came from that, from staff who said, hey, I can, and literally making a commitment, I can provide some of this training. I'm willing to do it. Call on me. But, you know, I also know I have colleagues who can do that. So I, I think the, the effort from the committee as a whole to try and offer some specificity, this has broadened more areas than typically have come forward from the committee. And we'll try and get more specific. I will share that with them, and if they're listening now, they can put that on their agenda for, for February 22nd, that we'll try and, my, my thought is that that is an opportunity for really getting stakeholders' specific eye on our proposed budget that gives us some direct feedback. So we'll try and do that.
Seeing no other, oh, Mr. Burgess.
I would like to express my support for the concept of giving this committee more time. As a former member of this committee, before I was a board member, I, it, the whole thing, even though we had great presentations from many staff, it, it was a lot of information to digest in, you know, a series of essentially four meetings over two months. So if, if that process, if there's any way to start it earlier and give them more time and more, more meetings, I think it would be a, a wise decision. The other thing, if I may, looking at this last paragraph under organizational considerations, where it discusses the potential for school closures, I just, I'm, I'm, I might be confused, but there's, it says here, with fewer buildings to staff, job vacancies might go down, sub bill rates might increase, overall services and support to students could improve by closing a school. And then it goes on to say, school closures should be considered if the alternative is increasing class sizes or reducing meaningful instructional support to students. And I guess my questions there, one, you know, I don't think that it logically follows that just because all positions are filled, that support to students or services to students would improve. You know, if we don't have enough positions to serve all of our students, then our, our services will decrease. Maybe I'm missing something in that logic, but the other part of it is, you know, it, I'm, I'm struggling to understand how closing a school is an alternative to increasing class sizes, because it seems to me that you have to put those students somewhere else, which means that class sizes would increase potentially at different district schools. So I just wanted to make those comments. Maybe someone can provide some clarification. But then if I could just make one request as we go into the budget cycle as well of the administration, of the administration. If we are looking at potentially school closures, I think it's going to be really important for our understanding to take a look at the cost and benefit analysis of that. So, you know, not just the cost savings from a financial perspective, but what is the impact to our students, to our families, to our educational outcomes potentially?
Dr. Minor, did you want to speak to that?
Sure, I'll speak to it. And I'll preface the statements, probably leading into our next meeting, that'll be the drop of the proposed budget, is discussing cuts isn't something any of us want to, want to be in this position to do. We're facing unprecedented deficits here in the district, and so looking at trying to balance a deficit of $28 million is challenging and very difficult. And so a bit of feedback for the Budget Committee, and then I'll answer your question. Something that would be helpful is separating feedback into potential investments and then potential cuts. I see a lot of investments in the memo, but not a lot of cuts. And when we're facing $28 million in a potential deficit, having, having a prioritized feedback of cuts that they would like administration to consider would have been very helpful in the proposed budget-making process. When it gets to school closures, there are real savings in school closures. We're estimating if you close two schools, that could potentially be a savings of about $3.6 million. Those costs are realized year, year after year, so it's not just a one-time savings. There are ongoing savings in your staffing costs. The question in terms of, don't students go elsewhere and will need staffing at those buildings? We certainly do, but the way that we distribute students to other schools, it's not a one-to-one ratio in terms of moving, you know, 30 students over here and then moving X teachers. So it usually pans out where you need less staff generally over the course of the organization as you close and consolidate those schools. Of course, you've got the utility savings on top of that, and there are real challenges with spreading out an organization into more square footage than what you necessarily need as a school district. And so anytime we recommend school closures or have those conversations, we do, I'll do that with a lot of forethought, as we know that it's an incredibly difficult conversation to have. But at the end of the day, any of these conversations we're going to have in a couple weeks to try to get at a $28 million cut are going to be incredibly difficult. They're going to be emotional, but at the end of the day, the Board's going to have to make some difficult decisions.
Ms. Burnett?
Thank you, President Hardy. Through the chair to either Dr. Minor or Dr., Mr. DeGraw, might be a question more for them. I was listening to, maybe it was gavel to gavel, maybe it was a talk radio show. I'm trying to remember exactly what it was I was listening to the other day, but they were talking education funding in Alaska, and they were actually talking on the subject of school closures. I'm just curious, is there any type of penalization that comes from school closures to the district that would minimize funding in any way?
Mr. DeGraw?
Yeah, I can take that. Thanks, Ms. Burnett. So the answer, the short answer is yes. So when, when a school is closed, there is a hit to revenue within the state foundation As part of our cost savings analysis, we're considering, there is a hold harmless clause in the foundation formula for school consolidation. So Dr. Minor referenced the $3.6 million number. That's actually a conservative number. It's a middle-of-the-road number. That's a minimum with, with the hold harmless that would be in effect for several years that could go as high as a little over $4 million in annual savings. So yes, there is a hit on the revenue side. All of my cost savings analysis spreadsheets take into consideration that loss in revenue. So we're looking at net savings, not gross savings. You have gross savings, and then you subtract out the loss in revenue to come up with final actual net savings. So the short answer is yes.
Mr. Burgess? Nope, there wasn't Mr. Doran.
Okay. I appreciate this conversation around this topic of school closures, which I think is reflective of the conversations and the limits of the Budget Committee. I will take responsibility for the wording of that paragraph in that section. It's more awkward than I would like it to be. I was rewriting it as, and editing it as I was getting ready to head out for a plane, to catch a plane to go south. And we made it to Seattle and then came back that same night. Goes with plane cancellations, but it's, we could have written, I could have written it a little bit better, so. But the thing that you brought forward and that we've been discussing about is really why the committee did not rule it out. They recognize it's got to be a conversation, if not this year, next year, you know, year after. The, our enrollments are going down, because our borough population is going down, and our state population is going down. So, and especially the demographics of the, those in the childbearing years. So it is something that's got to be on a horizon, and they did not want to rule it out. But it's not, just as we're talking, the complexity of it is not something where they could make a recommendation. And so what they tried to do was toss out, these are various considerations that would go into it. And then, again, coming to that cost benefit analysis in terms of student learning, is, got to be one of, part of that, that bottom line. Just to save money, may, you know, we may get to that point if the state does not fund public education. There are things that'd be there. We may not have the time to look at it the way it should be, but they wanted to bring out some of the considerations that, that...